Welcome, I'm going to bring to order the September 10th, 2019 Board Workshop and Shade Meeting. And we're all in attendance here, thank you, good to see everybody back. The first order of business is a shared, a shade meeting. And we have Mr. Kelly who's going to present it. And we're going to ask that those who are not board members are necessary for this shade meeting to please wait for us outside and we'll see you in the morning. Or sooner, okay, hopefully sooner.
Meeting at this time, and we open the workshop to the public. The next item on the agenda is public comments, and I'm going to turn over the gavel to our distinguished vice chair Gina Messenger for any public comments concerning the workshop.
Well, the first person was Mr. Nelson. Okay. And then D Ralph, and then Ms. Barber. That's just not how workshop works. There's only, it's only in the very beginning. Mr. Nelson, come on down. You're up. We just got it.
Oh, you got it.
We are, they're on it.
I'm Norm Nelson, citizen. Welcome. Purpose of two folds for session. I'm going to meet with you three different times this afternoon, this evening. And this is what I want to tell you what I'm going to talk about. First is my understanding of future forecast of budget. And I presented that two weeks ago. No objection, so I assume that's right interpretation. Use all new anticipated revenues and a beginning balance. The other thing I want to talk about this evening is one word, transfers. What do me and the rest of the world think of transfers, and what you as a school think of transfers? The main purpose of today is, if you look at page two or four, they're both the same, just printed differently. Many times I've been here and says, hey, how much do you spend? How much revenue do you have, and how much do you spend? And I never get a correct answer. So if you look at sheet four, it's easy, it's a bigger spreadsheet, and that's the latest numbers. So I want to ask you, how much money have you got to spend, or how much did you spend? Is there, three different numbers in colors at the very bottom. And now you got the AFR out today. It's a five, it's five, five, last page. Five and two are the same, just printed out differently. If you look at page five, it gives me three different numbers, three different numbers. The AFR, which is going to be a CFR somewhere point, 783 million. If you look at your budget forecast, those individual sheets that are attached, you add those up, gets 775 million. Look at your forecast, 820, 820. Actual revenue for the F is actually 782. So how much do you get, and how much do you spend? Which one do I choose? Which does a couple hundred thousand people out there choose? I have no idea. And so whenever we got more than two people talk, they give out different numbers. And would hope somewhere along mine, you want to show me the correlation of the two, or correct the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
D Ralph? Come on down, Ms. Barber.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Pat Barber. I'm the president of the Manatee Education Association, and honored to be the representative of the teachers and paraprofessionals here in Manatee County.
Excuse me, don't you get five minutes there?
I don't need it.
You don't need it, okay.
I'm going to be short.
Okay.
I'm short anyway, but my speech is going to be short. I'm here to talk to you about legislative priorities, and to invite you to join the teachers and paraprofessionals, and other school-related personnel in legislative priorities, which would be very narrow in scope. The most important thing that we believe we can be focusing on is funding for our public education system. Citizens around the state of Florida have shown over and over again that they're interested in funding their public schools. Like Manatee County, in the last election, 20 school districts voted in referendums, support for public education. Florida's 43rd in the nation in public school spending per student expenditures. Florida's 46th in the nation in teacher pay, over $12,000 behind the national average. Florida has nearly 50,000 support professionals who earn a wage below the national poverty level. Florida's base student allocation has increased by only $116, or 2.8% since 2007, 2008. Florida's overall per-student funding has increased by $369, or 5% since '07, '08. However, according to social security, the cost of living adjustment has increased by 21.7% between 2008 and 2019. Florida phases a massive teacher shortage, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and others. Thousands of our classrooms are lacking teachers and paraprofessionals, and many districts are struggling to get kids to school safely and on time because of these shortages. The Florida Education Association is going to focus on one thing, increasing the base student allocation. That will mean that the legislature will provide the money so that there will be local control over those dollars, and not categorical spending. Please join us. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. The next item concerns protocols for student athlete injuries. And we are honored here to have Jason Montgomery to explain where we are, where we ought to be going. Thank you very much, Mr. Montgomery.
Sir, appreciate being here. It's my understanding that one of the concerns and what we're looking at today is ambulance service coverage, particularly at our football events. The first thing you have there, and I kind of want to explain terminology that's used. There's basically four ways that ambulance services coverage gains within our state. No coverage, which is something happens, you call 911. Standby service, which is what we do in the district, which basically means we request a unit to be there. If it's not on a run, they'll stage at our facility, which means if a run happens, it may leave, come back, depending on what's going on. The other two ways, districts can either pay for it, or the school can pay for it. And that happens throughout the state in a lot of different ways. We had seven, well, let me go back. My bad on that one. Just wanted to make sure we looked at the Bay Area, because what we have here is Hernando has no coverage, Pasco has no coverage. Pinellas, they pay by the school, but that needs to be taken with a grain of salt, because they have a centralized funding model, where the district picks up tabs for officials in transportation, which we don't do here. Pasco, like I said, has none. Polk has standby, just like us, and then Sarasota, the schools pick up the tab. I also reached out to our county athletic directors around the state to get some feedback there. Seventeen of those districts responded to that request. Four have no coverage at games, four use standby coverage, six are paid by the school, two had coverage paid by the district, and one, which was Osceola, had a mix of standby and school coverage. When we look at the cost of these, the eight districts that responded with costs averaged about $425 per game. Manatee County EMS to have an onsite ambulance with crew is $160 per hour. So for a varsity football game, you'd be looking at two to three hours, so anywhere from 320 to 480. So this year, we have 35 varsity home games in the county. To cover those, you'd be looking at a cost of somewhere between $11,216,800. If you were to carry that over to JV, that's an additional $10,560. So total cost to cover football games in the district would be between $21,760 and $27,360. Some other information to give you, give you an idea. We typically, per year, over the last few years, have averaged transport probably around 10 student athletes across the board. It is not all football. It's about a 50-50 split. So you may typically have five, six football athletes during the course of the year, but we also have had transportation situations where we've transported athletes, cheerleaders, baseball, soccer, basketball. So it's not specific to what we have.
Yes, sir. Vice Chair Messenger.
Just a quick question. You're saying that there's standby. Does that count all the sports that you're mentioning right now, including baseball or only football?
The only one we request standby for right now is varsity football.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll also tell you that part of our problem started a year ago. Some of our schools out east, particularly Lakewood Ranch, reached out and said, hey, can we get standby units? And at that point, EMS said, we are stretched so thin in the county right now, we cannot guarantee you a standby unit. You would have to pay to use it. And now we're being told from law enforcement and EMS that, for instance, our preseason games, we would have had five in-county games going on. They don't feel they could have covered onsite units for all five of those games, even if we were paying for that service, so. And that's all I've got.
Okay, Board Member Gold.
What you have presented to us doesn't cover vast amounts.
Correct. Correct, it's only football number, correct.
Said that there are about five incidences that, on an average, occur.
Typically, it can be more than that, it can be less.
Do you have any idea as to the nature of those injuries that?
It can run the gamut. Concussions can get a transportation. I know we did have one spine injury last year in football that was transported. It wasn't one of our athletes, but it was an opposing team's athlete that was transported. It can be broken bones, those type of things. Since I've been in the district, which has been almost six years now, I don't know that we've had any life-threatening transport issues.
And this doesn't involve practice, it's just the games?
This is total transport, yes, and we don't have standby units or anything there for practices. Now, I would like to point out, for instance, at Lakewood Ranch, where I was at Friday night, you had Lakewood's team physician, a physician's assistant, and two athletic trainers onsite, since we were playing in county as well. So we have medical staff typically at all those games.
Okay. So when the game starts, there's a doctor on the sideline?
For varsity football, yes.
Okay, but not for JV?
Correct. But you would have your athletic trainer there for the JV game.
So I get hit, second player of the game, break my leg. The doctor looks at it and says, I got a broken leg. He calls EMS because there's nobody there. They come and they take me to the hospital.
Correct.
Okay, how much, what are the response times?
And that's going to vary throughout, it's going to depend on where your ambulance is at and routes throughout the district. You know, if you had an ambulance sitting at the station at Lakewood Ranch, that's less than a mile from the school, so it can vary widely across the district.
So right now, it's just a lot of happenstance in terms of how we respond to possible emergencies for our athletes?
To an extent, but again, it's a situation where that standby scenario goes on for all your other sport, or not standby, the 911 scenario would happen. Because it's simply not viable, as you see by the cost, to have an ambulance here all the time. But again, you know, we have full-time athletic trainers. Now that Hillsborough's brought them on, this was their first year of having full-time athletic trainers, you're going to have, and virtually every opponent we play in football will have two athletic trainers onsite.
So there is medical assistance immediately available
Yes.
at the time there's an injury
Yes, in every, in every one of our varsity and JV football games, correct.
And so what we're really talking about here is what are we willing to pay to eliminate response time?
Correct.
That's what the problem is.
Correct.
Are we willing to invest $21,760 to eliminate response time?
And I'll also mention while we're talking about this, because several, as I told you, several of the districts put it on the schools to pay for. I don't think some of our schools can handle that. We're looking at a substantial increase in officials' fees next year, and we are stretched paper-thin at a couple of our schools that don't generate the football revenue that some of the others do. So I don't think that's an option that, you know, the board should even look at, so. My personal opinion is we have adequate coverage at those games to be able to continue what we do, which is request standby if we have it, if not, call 911.
Okay, okay, Board Member Hope.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with his statement, because even in major trauma situations, major trauma, like somebody walks out in front of semi-tractor, gets run over, the trauma rule is the golden one hour. And I would probably guess that any incident in any one of our in-county football games has current ability to transport within one hour to one of the emergency departments.
And for instance, that spinal injury we had last year, it was stabilized onsite till EMS got there with our athletic trainer and our doctor, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I have some questions. Where do we come up with these figures of cost? Is this something that's billed to us?
Yes, it's the standard cost that you can find it on Manatee County EMS's website.
Okay, EMS, this is what EMS?
Correct, they're 160 an hour for a two-person and ambulance staff onsite.
Okay. 160 an hour, and so average cost, I'm looking at the first indication on this page, whatever it is, where it has cost. It says, average cost of eight responding districts. You know, I guess that's the districts you would
Correct, that's of the 17 county ADs that responded to me, that was the average cost.
Yeah.
Per game, by the way.
Okay. Then we go down to the next line, Manatee County EMS, 160 an hour, two to three hours. Well, how do we come up with two to three hours?
That's your typical length that you're going to be looking at for a varsity football game. And that's going to depend, you know, if they get, if you have an overtime game, that's going to go longer, you're going to definitely be in the three-hour range. It's very tight for us to get a varsity game in in two hours.
Okay, now, that's sort of assuming that an EMS ambulance is right there on the football grounds, basically.
That's a dedicated unit, it would be there.
That is there, okay. And to have that there, it would cost 320 to 8480. Now, I would assume the higher figure would be, including the time of transporting, you know, someone from the game, you know, to, you know, a hospital.
That's an hourly rate, that's an hourly rate, so if you're, you know, you're at 320 for two hours, now the added cost is if you had another hour, so that could be onsite. For instance, if you had an overtime game, it could be a three-hour charge, not including any type of transport or anything like that. But that would, historically, that would be an insurance situation where you're in a transport. Because all our student athletes have athletic insurance that, you know, works as a secondary to their primary insurance.
Okay, so the cost of
That's to have an ambulance and crew setting onsite.
Okay, well, the cost of transporting, let's say, an injured football player, doesn't cost us anything because it's covered insurance by insurance?
Correct. Same thing as the treatment of that athlete would be at the doctor or whatever, it's covered through insurance.
So it's being in place, that's what all these costs are about?
Correct.
Okay, now, the and this is EMS, what about a private ambulance transport?
We, I can get you the cost on that now. I know we did look at that with Lakewood Ranch, and it was a very similar cost structure.
What companies provide that?
I would have to look that up for you, sir.
We don't know at this point. The board doesn't know, doesn't have that information, okay. Now, the does it have to be onsite? Could it be, you know, there's a fire station, as you were mentioning, kind of just down the road on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. I'm going to guess like three miles, you know, from the football stadium.
Yes, sir.
Approximately that. The problem is there might not be an ambulance, you know, at the fire station to come to the football game.
That's correct.
It's not dedicated to the football game. It, when I was, I think I was at Lakewood Ranch when it was good 30, 40 minutes before an ambulance arrived at a player who was down on the ground, okay? And I'm assuming that that's because an ambulance at the fire station, you know, was on some other call, okay? Now, that night, there wasn't an ambulance at a game at Bay Shore, you know, that night, I don't think. I don't think, maybe we didn't have any, probably. I'm wondering if it's possible to have a dedicated ambulance somewhere that, you know, between, you know, local football games and their job is just to be available in the event there's an injury, you know, at a football game. And I'm talking about football game because that's the most likely in, I think, you know, chance of some physical injury. I mean, there's a lot of more contact there than in tennis or in baseball. You know, for instance, halfway between Lakewood Ranch and Bay Shore, you know, which would, you know, include any game going on at Brayden River.
My counterargument to that would be...
Well, how much would the cost be? I guess it would be a...
Well, I mean, you're still looking at an hourly rate wherever you put them, but it's going to depend on traffic. Your response rate could still be drastically different. And that's why typically schools either use standby ambulances like we're talking about, or a dedicated unit so that they can have them onsite, if the huge concern is response time. But again, the number of instances versus the cost versus all those other things, I really feel the standby unit is the best option. But it's totally up to the discretion of the board on how you guys want to go there.
Well, okay, let's say a Friday night to drive from Bay Shore, you know, on the west, you know, to Lakewood Ranch, takes about how long?
Again, that's going to be depending on traffic and all kinds of...
I'm talking Friday night. During, between 7:00 PM and 9:00 PM.
I couldn't even ponder a guess, sir.
It's not a whole day, it isn't five minutes. You've never driven that? I have, I mean, I've gone to football games, Bay Shore, Brayden River, and Lakewood Ranch, you know, in an evening, okay? And I don't think that from, you know, Bay Shore, you know, to Lakewood Ranch, you're talking a half an hour. I think you can, you know, do it in like, well, less than a half an hour.
But we could quite possibly have an ambulance setting at the, setting at Lakewood Ranch's station there a couple minutes from the field as standby. I'm just, all I'm saying is for the number of kids we transport, you know, it, and again, it's totally your own decision, but we have medical staff on.
We look to you for information.
I think it's problematic in the sense that we also have our second most common sport for injuries is soccer. So do we want to station ambulances for soccer? Because that's your number two national concussion sport behind football. We also now have, you know, boys lacrosse, which is a high concussion sport. Like I said, we've transported cheerleaders that have been dropped in the last two years. So, you know, I, again, I think we have medical staff there that can adequately handle it. That's why, you know, we have the certified athletic trainers. That's why we ask our team doctors to be on staff when we have the varsity football games at home. Because obviously, the contact level, as you said, is greater in varsity football than it is at JV or freshman. So, I mean, it's, again, it's totally up to you guys how you want to handle this. We can make whatever you all want to do work. But from my standpoint, my position, I do think we cover, as I've said before, I think we are the gold standard in the Bay Area of how we approach athlete safety.
I'm not satisfied. I don't think you've looked into this enough. I think we need to have, if we were to station, you know, between two or three games, you know, an ambulance that would be available, you know, to go to, you know, the need that arises at one of those games, to have that available. If not, okay, we're paying, what did you say? 160 an hour or something like that for EMS, maybe a private, you say is about the same, you know, for, you know, a three-hour period? And so you're talking about 480 for that evening between maybe servicing, you know, three games. I think that we've often learned that, you know, timing has a lot to do with recovery or preventing injury. And if you're going to, you know, have someone who's, you know, delayed in transport, you know, to, you know, a hospital when it's needed, that may be the difference between life and death. And I don't think that the time factors in here are suitably protecting our students or anybody else who might be at this gathering of a lot of people. And I'm disappointed that we don't have, you know, the breakdown of, you know, between, you know, let's say that we get...
Provided the breakdown as best I understood the scope that was being asked.
Okay, well, I guess there wasn't enough information communicated to you, and it hasn't been. If we had an ambulance at Brayden River, which is not halfway, but, you know, you know, between Lakewood Ranch and Bay Shore, I think that they would probably be in pretty good shape to cover all three. And I guess that, my concern is, you know, at, was it at Bay Shore? Or, you know, Brayden River, within the last couple, you know, games? It seemed like quite a, and this is in addition to that, you know, that other one out at Lakewood Ranch. It seemed like the response time was very, you know, slow dealing with, you know, someone who was injured, you know, on the field. And up here, we're ultimately responsible for that. That's where I'm coming from.
And I understand that. And last year, when we presented and talked about our athletic training stuff, the situation that you talked about, I got further details on that there had been a fan had gone down at the same time the athlete was coming off the field that was injured, and our athletic trainer was helping EMS attend to that at the time. So at every game I've been to, I'm telling you, our athletic trainers are top-notch, top-notch. And I'll go to bat for them any day of the week as far as dealing with student athletes on the field. And again, we were one of the first districts around here to bring them on full-time as district employees so we could have stability and have the best opportunities to have the top-quality people that we do.
When I was at Lakewood Ranch, and I was on the sideline, and there was an injured, injured Brayden River student who came off the field, and he had a lot of pain, I think it was a collarbone fracture, you know, just by the symptoms. And I'm not an X-ray machine. And he was sitting on the bench. There was concern by the trainers that they would rip, you know, his jersey and getting it off, instead of taking some scissors to try to get it off to help him. I didn't see a doctor show up. I'm not trying to discount the ability of these trainers, but there wasn't a coach, there wasn't any athletic director, there wasn't any, you know, they came by to, you know, provide assistance, and I don't know if they, when it was, they got around to, you know, have an ambulance, you know, to, you know, get him to address, to find out the extent of the injury. And I wasn't a happy board member for that boy about what kind of treatment was receiving on the sidelines. And that's, I think we can do better, and we need to do better, you know, for our students, and they ought to know we're going to do better. That's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Mr. Minor, I think...
Yeah, Board Member Gold.
I just had two questions. I think what the chairman is alluding to is some sort of hub coverage.
Yes, I understand that.
And what I'd like to know is, from an economic standpoint, does that change?
Inseparably, but again, I think that would be, I would assume, a Friday-to-Friday scenario on who's playing where, where you're going to attempt to stage, those type of things. Because you may need more than one, you know, for instance, our preseason classics that got washed out by rain, we had five home games scheduled that night.
So basically, to do the hub concept, and I just say that's what it is, to do that hub concept requires us to do this every week?
Correct.
Okay, the second question that I have for you is, these costs are our costs for our games. How many of these games are played against opponents who either come from districts where they have no coverage or come from...
We typically play in Hillsborough quite a bit, they have no ambulance coverage at their games.
Okay, would your opinion change with respect to the cost being shared between schools?
As our opponents?
Yes.
They're not going to do that.
Okay, so they won't share the cost of...
Yes, sir.
Having an ambulance there?
Typically, security and ambulance and things are responsibility of the home team.
And most times, we play away and home, so one year, we're home, the next year, we're away, so...
But the thing is, when we go to Hillsborough County, we go to a place where there's no coverage.
Correct.
Hillsborough County comes here, something happens here, at least they have coverage. So what I'm asking is, is there any appetite to try to deal with sharing this cost? And now, what is it, is it a conference? How does this work?
Now, I mean, we get put in districts, Hillsborough was all centralized funding up there the last three years. They had ambulances prior to the last three years, the last three years, they've chosen to have a 911 and removed that because they did not feel it was cost-effective.
So in your opinion, there's no way to do this?
Well, and I mean, we get into, again, what I'm being told from law enforcement and EMS is that we're strained extremely thin, particularly on the east end of the county already. So we may want to do this, and it may not even be an option on a given night, depending on the number of runs that they're being called on.
Okay, thank you, very much. Thank you. Other board members? Okay, Board Member Hope.
I want to thank you for the report. I mean, talking about hubs, the emergency medical system in the state of Florida is probably one of the most sophisticated in the nation. And while you may not believe it, there is staging of EMS units around the county by hour to provide adequate call times. The issue of whether or not an ambulance came as quickly as someone thinks it needed to come had to do with the trauma score that that patient was given by whoever's making the call, and a priority on, you know, when that individual needed to be transported. There, like in many health professions, there is a shortage of EMTs and things like that. And so perhaps the question to be answered is to have Manatee's EMS system give us their projected response times on Friday nights when we have football games in those locations. Because you're going to find that those units are staged, not just at fire departments, and then you've got the whole private transport system who has their units staged around the county based on the projected need really in any given hour. So I'm pretty confident in Manatee's system that there is adequate response time pretty much throughout the county. Now, is a gunshot victim going to have a higher priority than a non-neurological injured football player where there is an athletic trainer there that's speaking to 911 on the status of the individual? Yeah, they're going to transport the gunshot victim sooner. And I got news for you, if we were paying for a unit to be on our field and there was a higher priority trauma, and it's the Manatee County's EMS system, I'm pretty sure that unit would leave our football field to go to that car accident. So we're getting into, you know, I think the staff has provided us with what it would cost if there was availability. I think it was responsive. I think we should leave the EMS and transport to those officials. We just heard that oftentimes, we even have team physicians at some of our football games. And so what may seem like things are not happening fast enough to an observer, there's probably a lot going on in the background that's determining what the priority is, where that individual's most likely going to need to be transported based on the projected medical need. And so I'm satisfied with the administration's response. And maybe to satisfy the question that maybe some of the board members have is just get a report from EMS of their projected response time where we have football games each week. And I think everyone will be assured that if there was something significant that happened, that the resources would be there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I felt assurance when Dr. Owen McCarthy was at the sidelines of all Manatee High School football games, both home and away. You could see him, you could tell he was there. We knew there was going to be medical assistance if there was an injury to any Manatee Hurricane player or even the opposition. Now, I don't see that at any of the local games anymore. I'm wondering if it might be considered, you know, by your department that those who are the medical physicians for the team would wear something to make it quite obvious that that physician, the team physician, is available? And where that team physician is available, you know, for both teams? Now, I think that the district would pay for that sweater or that coat, and I think it would be, you know, maybe answer questions and provide assurance to people like me who would really like to know that there's a team physician, you know, on the field while this is going on. Do you have a problem with that?
No, the only thing I would tell you on that is most of those doctors wear, are wearing what is representative of the organization they work for, which is typical, but we can ask and look into it.
What would be the downside of doing that?
Oh, I'm not saying there's a downside, I'm just telling you what's typically worn by a team doctor.
Do you know of any downside?
Only they're providing a free service through their company, and I'm sure that they want to have that recognition, which is what they typically do. We also, you know, do signage and sponsorships with them to try to encourage when we have those team doctors. But we can definitely look into it.
I'm wondering what training there is to the, that says, you have a player in pain and you're worried about the cost of a jersey. Where does that come into the training?
Sir, I can't speak to, I can't speak to something that I wasn't at. And I can tell you that, again, we have certified athletic trainers that are some of the best around. I've not been at a game, you know, the Bay Shore Lakewood Ranch game the other night, Bay Shore player got injured on the other side. We had both athletic trainers, a P A and a doctor there, within 15 seconds of the time the kid went down. I can only tell you what I see, and I know you saw circumstances where it might have been different, but the ones I've been at, you know, they've been phenomenal. We had, at practice the other day at, I believe, Brayden River, we had a heat incident, which again, we're on the front end of. They got him in an ice bath before, did everything perfect before EMS got there, to the extent that EMS didn't even transport once they identified, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the new facility commemorative, you know, plaque policy, and...
I think legislative platform is next.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay, board legislative platform. The, the super, I guess I'm supposed to lead off with this. The, we have a meeting, you know, with our area legislators, I believe it's October 2nd, is it? At the county administration building, at which time, it's an opportunity for us to share our concerns, our hopes with our legislators. And I was hoping that we would have a couple of resources to lean on, look to, that didn't arise. One was the Florida School Board Association had a meeting in Kissimmee, which was canceled. The agenda, you know, for our Central Florida Public School Board Association did not have it on there, but that didn't preclude our having some discussion about it. I'm going to, you know, thank Ms. Barber about, you know, some of the things that she spoke about are, you know, concerning, you know, compensation for our teachers and other employees. And I'm going to hand out, you know, some, can I get some assistance for handing out information concerning our compensation? If you could do that, everybody on the days and have it available for anybody in the audience that has been called Education Facts, and I'll attribute this to several sources, but mainly for NEA, MEA, and Pat Barber. And the importance of this Education Facts is to give some comparison of how Florida ranks with other, you know, states in our country in providing compensation, you know, for our teachers. And also, it does have relation to how we compensate our other employees. It doesn't reflect well upon our state in attracting teachers from other states. It doesn't reflect well upon our telling high school students who are, that you ought to go to teacher colleges. In fact, our teacher colleges in this state have had a significant drop in enrollment over the last few years. And that has been a source, you know, for our receiving... And that, uh, has been a source, you know, for our, uh, receiving, you know, getting new teachers. And, um, it's dropped off, so we have vacancies. You know, what, what are our vacancies right now? I know that it was helped by, uh, our mileage, but what is our vacancy right now in teachers?
Now, due to the ten day count and adding, uh, additional units due to our growth, we have about ninety vacancies.
Ninety vacancies.
Teacher vacancies due to our enrollment increase.
Okay, ninety teacher vacancies. Now, that's a stark fact that isn't included in here, but it's reflected by some of the figures that, you know, uh, Pat Barber was talking about and is set forth in this Education Facts. And I don't think this is something that any legislator can sit there or stand there and say, I'm really proud that, that Florida is forty-sixth in the nation in terms of teacher pay.
And yet, they do it every year.
Well, and they say, but by gum, our taxes are low. And, uh, that, that's the pitch. I've heard it, I've heard candidates, you know, let's compare how our tax load with New York and all of this stuff. They don't get up and say, gee, aren't you proud, Florida citizens, that we're, uh, Florida is forty-sixth in the nation, over twelve thousand dollars behind the national average? And I think, uh, it's time, and I, you know, to talk to our legislators about this. And, uh, to say, we want you to say with a straight face that you're proud of what you, we compensate teachers and other employees in public education. Now, I think we have an ally from someone that you might not suspect to be an ally. Because at the, the meeting in, in downtown Orlando where I was yesterday, uh, for an hour and a half, we had a person there who knows a lot more about education in Florida than I do, which is, there was a lot of people. But I, I think that you would agree that Richard Corcoran has a lot of knowledge about what's going on right now. And Commissioner Corcoran, Education, uh, uh, Commissioner Corcoran joined us, you know, in Orlando at the meeting of the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition. And he gave a little bit of talk and, and then, uh, it was very receptive to, you know, questions. And, uh, he shared the, the, the feelings that I'm expressing now, that it's time. This is ripe, that the legislature needs to address this deficiency. Not just, uh, reverse it, but to correct it. And I, I was surprised. One of the things that he started out talking about was the, the importance of education. And he did it this way. He said, you've probably all heard the story, uh, when the Constitution Convention comes up and we got an anniversary of the Constitution, you know, a week from tomorrow. And, uh, the district has in play to have a Constitution essay contest. And to have representatives from our high schools, uh, you know, submit, uh, essays of why the Constitution is important to me. Eighty words are left, that, that's about the size of a, less than the size of a, um, a letter to the editor. But why is it important? You know, because it gives protection to me or, or what? But I'm, I'm digressing on that. But the, the story is, when Ben Franklin came out from that, uh, Constitutional Convention and he was asked, well, Mr. Franklin, what kind of government we have? And the story is, he said, well, you got a republic if you work to keep it. And thi- this is Corcoran talking, and he says, in order to have a democracy, in order to have something that's ruled by, you know, the people in a republican way, and you don't have a monarchy, you don't, and you don't have a mob rule, you know, where it's just people reacting, uh, you have to have an education populated, an educated population. And that's why public education and all education is so important to us, our country. It's a patriotic duty to support education. This comes from Richard Corcoran. And, uh, I was just amazed, you know, I'm clapping, you know, in my mind, and afterwards I said, you know, uh, before you came in, you know, Commissioner Corcoran, you know, the, the members of the Coalition, including me, were talking about, uh, how, you know, we can, you know, all get together, the governor, the legislature, superintendents, you know, teachers, you know, the union, you know, to correct, you know, this trend, downward trend, uh, in support of public education. And, uh, and, and he says, it's not an easy job, you know, and not all legislators are going to agree with you. And, but I, I said, if there's one way to appeal to a lot of these legislators is to say, this is a patriotic thing. Do you believe in a republic or do you believe in mob rule? If you want to have preservation of the republic, you need to support education. And you're in a position to support, uh, public education in financing it in a way that will attract good teachers, keep good teachers, and fill our teaching schools. You know, by, you know, reversing the trend from what it is. And the trend is, in this Education Facts, you see that the, uh, the base student allocation has increased a hundred and sixty, sixteen dollars or two point eight, uh, since the two thousand school year. That's from, that's going back, you know, what, now twenty-two years? Two point eight percent? Are you kidding? But the cost of living, uh, has increased by one hundred and sixteen percent, uh, you know, and since the, uh, hu- two thousand eight year. Uh, Ford's overall per student funding has increased by five hundred, or three hundred and sixty-nine dollars or five percent since two thousand seven. But the cost of living adjustment has increased twenty-one point seven percent. We haven't come, came even close to keeping up with the increased, you know, um, cost of living. Now, I, I would hope that when we sit down, you know, with our legislators, we provide this to them and say, we're so glad you're here because you are the ones who are in position to correct, to correct this deficiency, to correct so that we have a republic, uh, continuing, you know, in our country and in our state, uh, so that the, this mass, massive shortage, shortage, which I end up, uh, of teachers, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and others will come to an end. And this is a year to start it. And I didn't get any argument, you know, from Richard Corcoran, uh, about doing just that. Uh, and everyone around the table said, you know, that's something we need to do. We need to go back to our school districts and say, it's time to give reality, you know, to our legislators and be responsible. And I believe that in this legislative session, you know, with our help, our advocacy, our, you know, we love you, this is a job you gotta do, that this can be the education year and that they will, uh, respond and say, uh, yes. It's not just going to be a change, it's going to be something to address, uh, this deficiency, uh, that's been going on for, uh, too long. So, I, I would hope that that would be one of the things. The, the other thing, um, that comes to mind, there, there's another handout here. And Bob Goss, uh, is working with, I think, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, to, along the same line, uh, working with, uh, Jim Hamilton, who I think is kind of the, the dean or deacon of education, you know, funding history. He spoke to us as a group on one or two occasions, uh, FSBA. Uh, he, again, he knows much more about it than me. Can, can, uh, I'll tell you what, uh, can somebody help me hand this out? And the, these were suggestions that, you know, Bob Goss, who I think most of you know, was former chairman, you know, of this school board, uh, has been playing with, uh, the, to, um, also, you know, pitch and that, for the chamber to pitch. I mean, they're, they're with us, uh, for addressing the deficit of compensation uh, for, for our, uh, teachers and other staff. And the number one that I'll just read here, per student funding, uh, shall be increased to funding comparable to the student funding during the two thousand two, two thousand three school year. Now, to do this, that, to, to make it comparable, uh, with the cost of living, uh, the, this requires per student increase statewide of seven hundred and ninety-five dollars uh, to be comparable, um, that, you know, for teachers to get back to the two thousand two level. That's a lot of money, you know, per student, you know, uh, you know, to go into, uh, use by school districts across the country. It's a lot of money, but that's a lot of money that hasn't been paid and should have been paid, you know, during this period of time. That's, I think something, you know, to be presented. I hope that you all would agree with me that we want to present this, uh, you know, to our legislators and say, you know, when you go to Tallahassee, remember this should be the, the year of change and you can go back to your community with pride in saying that, you know, Florida's, Florida is no longer going to be, you know, forty, uh, forty-seventh of the country in terms of supporting its, uh, teachers in public education. The future of Florida depends upon it. Another thing that, you know, Bob Goss was talking about, and we've been sort of the centerpiece of discussion, I think, across the state is, uh, dealing with, you know, charter schools. And, uh, the, uh, you know, one, one problem that, that we encounter and everybody around the table at Central Florida School Board Coalition, uh, said that they ran into is, you know, some of the charter schools will take in students, you know, to get the money, you know, to, you know, run their schools, pay their officers and whatever. And after the third count, well, you know, the, the student has to leave. And they go to the public schools. Maybe that, you know, student hasn't learned much and that's why they're basically kicking them out. And they're kicking them out before the testing comes, you know, for, for grading that charter school, but after they've received the money. Now, uh, so the, the, the public school gets this student, and sometimes they're, uh, you know, kind of a problem student. Maybe they're not been paying attention to their work, but then we have to test them, that is, public schools, and that reflects upon our grade and how the state, you know, views it. Well, a lot of people, including me, don't, don't think that's fair. There should be some kind of disincentive, uh, of doing that. If you're going to admit them, if you're going to take the money, then you're going to be responsible, you know, in the test of how that student does, and that's your money. And, uh, the, the position that, uh, uh, you know, Bob had down here is number two regardless, or excuse me, is number three. Uh, during an academic year, a charter school which loses a student to a traditional public school shall lose all funding for that student for that year. And the funding shall be transferred to the public school to which the student transferred. Is there any argument about that?
Uh, Mr. Minar?
Yeah.
I, if I have a question, if I may, for the superintendent. Um, and this was a, um, soapbox I've been on before and then have read kind of conflicting information, so I wanted to ask the superintendent. I was also critical of this game the charter schools will play, where keep them until they get the funding and then in early, I guess after, right after survey three, send them off, send them back to the traditional public school. I've had some pushback that that's not necessarily the case or the rules around FEFP funding have changed. So, I wanted to go to you to get what, during this school year right now, did schools only get the money if they were there, if the student is there for survey two and three?
They calculate, uh, the funding twice, as you know. So, uh, yes, if you are, uh, there survey two and survey three, and then they do other surveys in the summer. But then, you're not going to get any more disbursement after survey three of that school year.
And that's what, February is survey?
February, usually second week of February.
And so if, if a charter is doing that right now in this nineteen twenty school year, if the day after survey three...
Or the day after survey two.
Okay, so, but survey two would be, they're going to get the...
October second.
They're going to get them, they would get the funding for that first semester?
So, what happens in, in survey two, which happens around the second week of October, uh, it's calculated, so it's based on the attendance then, you get dispersed those funds around December, uh, January sometimes. So, yes, based on that calculation, you get the money, uh, you know, around halfway through the year. And then based on February, you get the disbursement around May.
For the rest, oh, in May for the rest of the year.
For the survey three, which is in February.
So...
So, yeah, if they are, yeah, and they do have a regulation in their contract that if a student is gonna be removed, both parties need to agree. So, i- it probably is something that, uh, we've, Mr. Dr. Pastella needs to, you know, monitor and watch as well, if we're seeing that that is occurring. Uh, you know, we do get some complaints about that. So, i- you know, it's probably something that we can also do a little bit of regulation and control ourself to work with that a little bit more.
Board Member Golding?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not quite so sure I understand. The first calculation in October doesn't come till December.
Correct.
And the second calculation, which is made in February, isn't dispersed
Correct.
until May. Between February and May, are you saying that it is impossible for us to determine whether or not there ought to be an adjustment of the money that is going to be given in May?
Well, there won't be an adjustment.
Why not?
Because they calculate our funding based on survey two and survey...
That's not what this is about. This is talking about how we're going to punish charter schools that take their children the day after February, after the calculation is made, now that they know they got the money, and send them back to the public schools. So, what I'm asking you, are you telling me that there's no check on that that says, uh, you can't send the kid back on March first that was on your roll, February to whatever it is?
There's no regulation on that today, no sir, in terms of, of funding requirement. That's also how school grades are calculated.
Okay.
You have to be in there for both of those surveys in order for the grade to be factored and tied to that school.
But we're talking about money here, so...
You're talking about money.
Okay, so what I'm asking about is, if we are saying here, not just during the academic year, which is very vague, but what we're really saying here is that if a charter school loses that student after the second calculation is made and before the appropriation for that second calculation is made, that money should be adjusted to go to the school where the child went.
I, I think that's what, uh, the point that's...
No, that, that, that's, that's not what this says, that's, and that's why I'm raising the issue.
I think that's what the intent, from what I understand.
Okay, so, if that's the intent, that you can't have a kid on your roll on February one for that calculation, when you know you're not going to get the money until May, that means that kid is there March, April, or going to another school on that school's roll, but you're still going to get the money. That's unfair. And, and that's a specific and particular unfairness that I don't have a problem addressing.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, uh, because the rule already is that you have to be there for the first and second calculation, is that correct?
For school grade, but you get funded even if you're there partial. So, if you're there for survey two, you get the money for survey two.
Okay.
So, uh, and then you get another calc, so, uh, say they, uh, left in December.
Right.
Then the receiving school can pick them up for that second calculation for the second half of the year.
I see, but, but you've gotten away with keeping the money for a kid that was...
Or half if they were there. So, i- if they left in November, then essentially they, they got credit for the funding for them. Uh, but the receiving school can pick them up, uh, and get credit for the back half if they're there in February.
Okay, is there any way to create language that says, whenever that kid leaves?
For it to be prorated.
To be prorated, and it will come out of the second calculation.
We can, we can work on, I can work on language for it.
Yeah, that, that, because that to me solves the problem that we're trying to solve, which is that the money stays at the, at the left school when it should be going...
What you really want is the funding to be prorated based on
Yes.
the time spent in the academic place of learning.
That's correct, and it's, and that money is taken out of that second calculation. So, that lets you know that if you're playing games, you'll know before we know that you aren't able to take advantage of us like that. That, that, that I...
Yeah, that's, that's the point of this. And, um, I'm glad you asked that question. And it's statewide, you know, this, you call it a game, you know, is being played. And, uh, uh, so... And so that, that's one of the ideas boiling with the Chamber of Commerce and Bob Goss, who's acting on the Legislative Committee.
That was number three, right?
That was number three.
We haven't discussed number two yet.
Number two, you know, at, at the, you know, Coalition was, you know, one and, one and two were, you know, warmly endorsed by the, everybody at the Coalition meeting, you know, basically significant increase in the per student funding and three legislation to discourage this, maybe, you know, kick it out to problem students and still keep the money. Yes, Mr. Kennedy?
I just have a quick question before we move on to the last one, which is number two. I want to go back to number one for a second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Minar, at the Central Flor, Central Florida School Board Coalition...
Yes, sir.
There was consensus around the table that number one is a good idea, including from Richard Corcoran, believed that to be a good idea?
He, he believes, the, the, the sum of his expression was that there was a need for Florida to make a significant jump in the compensation, you know, going to, you know, school districts. And, you know, in, in terms of the, you know, particular amount, he, that wasn't, you know, part of his endorsement, but he, you know, he was very positive in his expression that, you know, Florida should jump significantly, you know, from, you know, the position of number forty-seven up to the top, maybe, you know, fifteen in the, in the state at the very least.
Okay. I just want to, I think, give the credit for this where it belongs, which is with Governor DeSantis, who, since he has come in, has been very pro-education, pro-teacher, or, or at least education funding, let me put it that way. Richard Corcoran had multiple years in the Florida Legislature to walk the walk, and he never did. And I believe, if this is the same meeting I read a news article about, he walked out of that meeting, was press writing reporters on details of what that would look like, and he offered nothing. So I, I do, I, I only want to make that statement...
What, what meeting are you, are you talking about, the Central?
The School, the School, yeah, the Central Florida School Board Coalition.
There wasn't, there wasn't a press there.
Okay, so maybe, maybe I'm talking about something. My, my greater point still stands, is that I, I think we need to focus our efforts on the Legislature and the governor, because they're the ones who are going to make it happen. Again, what's that, what's that phrase about past performance is indicative of future expectations? I can't remember, but, so, and this is going to be a tough go, because this, you know, look at the, the, all these numbers we're looking at for the past 12 years, this, and the same, so this is going to be an uphill climb, to say the least. And I think, you know, if we go to the Legislature and just say, hey, can we incrementally bump this up? I think seeing some kind of dramatic at, you know, hey, this legislative session, we didn't make up for this cost of living adjustment gap in one legislative session, I don't think that's probably financially feasible, but I think if we come at it from a, a kind of long-term strategy perspective, and I know sometimes legislators don't think, you know, they're more short-term thinking and potentially, but, so I, I, I just want to throw that two cents in, is maybe a better way to go about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Yes, sir. Vice, yes, ma'am. Vice Chairman Messenger, okay, okay.
Just since we're talking about number one, um, I agree with everything you just said there, but I would say that if this is the wording that we're looking at, that can we add something, and I, I'm not the wordsmith, because, you know, we've got lawyers up here that are good at that, but something that would indicate it's not a categorical, because I do think that that, they, there's recently, well, we look, we've increased it by X amount of dollars, but it's always been very specific things. And so, once again, it's a group of politicians that can go around the state saying, look, I did this, look, I did that, but it's not truly where we need it and how we'd need to use it. And if you believe in local control, which would mean that we know the best way to spend it, then you should not have it in a categorical. And so I don't know how you'd phrase that, but to me, if this is something that we're going to go for, which I support, then to me, that needs to be indicated somewhere in there, that it would not be a categorical, however you want to put that in there, if you have to say it's part of the base student allocation to make it that, whatever you have to do to indicate that.
I totally agree.
But that is my only concern, is, well, look, we raised it by $800, but you raised it by $800 and put it in these three categories and didn't hit the things that needed the most.
Right, I totally agree with that, and that, and the wording of number, number one should really, you know, talk in terms of base student allocation. And, and what you said about the local, you know, we know more about what's really necessary to move this district than somebody sitting up there in the Legislature. And it's the old story about they, they might, you know, give a hundred bucks to, you know, a person to, you know, you know, help, you know, fix a radiator when they get, or he has a new car, but he'd rather pay for the dental bill, and that guy is better, you know, suited for knowing how to use that hundred bucks than, you know, somebody, you know, giving him a hundred bucks and said, put it, fix it on a radiator, so.
Right, when we were talking about the village, when I would go and talk to community groups and organizations about it, one of the things that I always explained was, this is your local control. I am here every day, I am telling you what we're going to spend it on, it is very clearly, you decide, you have voted on this, and it's, it is, it is the best local control you can get.
Yeah, we're local.
And so, to me, that, as Ms. Barber has brought up, there have been lots of referendums that have passed. Not only that, the, oh, I think it was, I don't think it was a constitutional amendment, but to the property tax, the...
Yeah, it was a, one last year.
What's that? Yeah, it didn't pass.
To increase the exemption.
Right, it didn't pass, because I think there's a lot of Floridians that realize, no, we need to invest in infrastructure, no, we need to invest in our kids, and there's a lot of even retirees that realize the value in that. So, you know what I mean? I think there's a group in the Legislature that don't understand their base. And I think that that vote should have said to them, whoa, I've been looking at this wrong. I keep selling tax cut, tax cut, tax cut. They could have had their own tax cut, didn't choose it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And, and so to me, that, to me, should have been a red flag. I will say, I like all these points, and I do agree that narrow focus is important, but I do not believe that funding is the only thing that will solve our teacher shortages. And as I said on my soapbox at the last meeting, to me, one of the biggest things that, that our teachers face, that our parents face, that our schools face, is the high stakes put on this test. And that is, that's, that's from the parent perspective, and that's also from my teacher perspective, where I could have been very easily unfairly judged on a test for one test score, and as a parent now, thinking about my child who, she might get really nervous before a test, and yet that is how she's going to be graded. That's how the school is going to be graded. And it, there's a huge amount of stakes on that test, and I don't know how, once again, I'm not the wordsmith, but making that clear to the Legislature that, yeah, we can have the test, but the stakes are so high that we're having anxiety in our students and in our teachers. When you have to have a pep rally for a test, that's a problem. When you have to have all the kids standing out in a hallway cheering on those kids that have to take the FSA, that's a problem. That should not happen. There should not be a pep rally for a test. But that's what's happening, because it's such high stakes. So I don't know the best way to articulate that, and, and I, I understand the need for a narrow focus, but to me, unless you fix that part, you're still going to lose teachers. Because I could still make a lot of money doing something else and not have that. That's all I'm saying. Still staying on my soapbox.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Messenger. I, I think that, yeah, Board, I, I agree with everything you say. Go ahead. Board Member Goldin, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to be clear in number one.
Yeah.
Ms. Messenger, are you, are you asking that per student funding, that vague language there, because when you get down to calculating what per student funding is, it's the base allocation plus all of the, all the categorers. Are you saying that what you really would like to see is Florida's base student allocation be increased? Because that's...
That's what I wrote in here.
Yeah, I just crossed it out, and that's basically what I wrote as well.
Okay.
But you're the lawyer, so I said, you, you guys are the wordsmiths.
No, no, that, that, I just want to be clear, and the, there, it says the requires, this requires, is what it means. It says the, the requires a base student allocation increase statewide. Now, here's my problem with the base student allocation statewide. Am I correct in saying that the base student allocation varies from district to district?
Well, they do have some adjustments based on poverty or, or less populated regions or so forth, so that, there are adjustments and so...
Right, and, and what, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that $795 in Glades County, and the same adjustments that would be made presently, I think that they ought to still be made, but they all ought to affect base student allocation, that's all.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
My understanding was there's the base student allocation, and there's about, I don't know, 10, 20 other little buckets.
Yes.
And there's an index for, and there's sparsity, so there are those other things, but the base student allocation is still the base student allocation.
You want just that, that set base, but they do add on for those other disparities on top of. So if you are making that 795 added to, they will add on those other adjustments. So I think what you were trying to say that you wanted to put, put in place would be in place.
Okay, okay, let me, let me say it the way I know to say it. We've got 67 counties here. Does every county under this get $795, or does that change from county to county?
That's what your recommendation will be for the base, but then they do add on adjustments based on poverty or population or difference.
And that's the way they do it now.
That's the way they do it now.
Okay, so, so I, I stand, I, I agree with Vice Chair Messenger, that what we're really trying to do is to raise base student allocation by $795, and only that, and that will take it only to 2002.
Well, back...
That make it comparable.
That will take it back, but I do think Charlie's point probably is a valid one. What are the chances that they're going to change the base allocation almost $800 per student?
Well, then, I have a question. What is it now? If it takes $800 to get to 2002, and this is 2019, where, are we still in the 1900s? See, you, you, you know, if, if we're going to really be serious about this, what is it now? What, where does it, if we're 43rd or 46th, what year is this? If this will take it to 2002, then what year is it? Anybody brave enough to say? 1987? No, I mean, that, that, that's what, that's what the real problem here is. What year is it? I mean, you know, when you talk about, well, we don't want to take them too fast, that sounds like all deliberate speed to me in 1954.
Nice comparison.
Yeah.
The, the...
I still haven't got an answer.
Okay.
Well, I think it, I think it's back on the sheet. When the recession hit in '07, it really declined drastically, and it's never hit those levels since before the recession, is really what it is.
I think Board Member Hope has, has some input here.
Well, just from a, a point of reference, the one mil tax that we approved raised our per pupil funding about $800 per pupil. So we are at that level.
We are at 2002. Well, where were we, Doctor Hope, when we started asking for this? Do you know, does anybody know that? Because the reality, you know, we keep talking about we want to do more, we want to do more, but nobody really wants to be honest about why. It's because we're 20 years behind. And I, at, at some point, you just have to admit that, 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 that we have politicized our educational process to the extent that knowledge is secondary to perspectives that we're trying to create and financial things that we're trying to accomplish. And I don't, I don't want to get on my soapbox, I'm just going to say that we really, really need to be honest with the people.
Okay, uh, was Charlie asking, okay, Board Member Hope, sir?
It's, it's twofold warrants, because you were there. What, um, what was the number, or did the Commissioner have a number? I, I, I mean, I forget what the, the governor had, is proposing in his budget, but what, what, what number was the Commissioner talking about? Was he talking about a percent increase, or?
What he talked about was he, a, a real effort to raise base student allocation, you know, up to, and, and he said, you know, at least 15, maybe, maybe 10 or, or a fifth in the state, okay? In, in the country, you know, compared. Now, how much that is in dollars, he didn't say. I don't know what it is to, you know, get it up there, but it does sound, you know, significant to me. And that's why I said that it, it appears that we're going to have, you know, significant, you know, backing, you know, from the governor to significantly increase base student allocation for education this year. The, and then, you know, I alluded to kind of the, the political push, rationalization, that it's, it's, it's patriotic, you know, to support education, we need to do that, and that, that, that he was talking about. I thought it was great, because there, there are some legislators who feel, you know, any, any increase is, you know, throwing money away, you know, throwing it at teachers and it's a waste, or whatever, or giving it to the school board, and, and they know more ways to waste it than anybody in the world. You know, I mean, there are some legislators who kind of think that way, and, and that's how, you know, they, they got elected, and they, they pitch it that way. Now, we don't agree with that, but, you know, that, that's a viewpoint, and that's a vote in the Legislature, and here we have the Commissioner, you know, presenting a really good argument to counter them. Are you patriotic or not? Well, of course you're patriotic. If you are, you want to have an education, an educated, you know, voters as well as, you know, out there. So I thought that was beautiful. I, I never thought about that myself. I, I've always thought, you know, education's good for the community, but I didn't think in terms of maintaining the republic. And that's beautiful. The, as far as the specifics of the amount, I don't know, but I, you know, before we meet October 1st, you know, that's something that I and whoever else is there, you know, we ought to have that figure. You know, maybe, maybe Pat has that figure already.
We have on the line that Mr. Goss proposed.
Yeah.
Our proposal is $767 increase.
Okay.
And the cost of that is $2.4 billion.
Okay, thank you.
And that is to correct a decade of what?
Okay.
Our public schools.
That's a decade, okay, not 15 years. His was a little bit more, I guess. But, so that gives us a figure to, you know, to, to work with. It's significant, but it's not a change. We're talking, you know, correcting, you know, decades-long, you know, neglect, which has been a result that, you know, students who might have thought about going into teaching are not going into teaching, even though it's a very noble profession, you can't pay the rent, you can't pay the mortgage, you can't buy the food with nobility, you got to have the money. And so they're not doing it, and we have a great shortage. And that, that's, you know, part of the pitch. And it sounds like, you know, everybody on the board is, in substance, agreeable, you know, to that. Number, number, can I go into number two, or is there any further discussion we want to have, one and three?
We've got some more items on today's workshop agenda as well.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kennedy made a good point, you know, how, you know, are, are we going to do this all in one year? Well, it'd be nice, and you ask for one year, and they might say, well, okay, but, but we want to give support. And Mr. Kennedy is absolutely right about Representative Cochran, Speaker Cochran wasn't a great advocate, you know, for funding education, as I remember. And, but he's working for DeSantis now, and he's going to do what DeSantis and pitch what DeSantis wants. That's, that's my belief, and I thought he did a great job of it, you know, on Monday. I, I don't know, you know, Mr. Kennedy averred to some newspaper article that...
Yeah, if the meeting you're talking about just happened yesterday?
Yes.
Oh, then that was not the newspaper article I read. But he, he, Cochran at some public event used that two billion dollar, you know, we need to increase funding by two billion dollars.
Okay.
And then when, after that public event, he was approached by reporters to say, can you talk about where that money's gonna come from or what's gonna get pushed out of the budget to?
Yeah.
Cover that. And he had no answers. But I think, I think you're, you're on the right track that, uh, the governor's in charge now and, and he seems to be, um, delivering to his administration that this is something we are gonna prioritize, um, which again, uh, multiple times I've been surprised by the gov, by our new governor, pleasantly surprised. So we'll, we'll see what comes out of the, we'll see, see what comes out of the session.
Yeah, I, 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 and I think it's getting the message to the legislators. And, you know, and, you know, the President of the Senate certainly has a lot to do with it. And, and we got, uh, influential members in the House of Representatives, but they're hearing this pitch and maybe they'll deliver the bridge.
Yes, sir. Board, Board Member Gold. I'm just waiting for us to get to number two. That's all.
Okay. Any, any, any more comments regarding one and three? Uh, the, okay, number two. Now, um, this, yeah, at, at the coalition, um, may, had a lot of discussion. Uh, the, I, and I, and when I talked with Bobby Goss about it, he says, you know, what was going on at LMA, I won't use all the words, but the most, I, you know, truly unfortunate in terms of diversion of money that is intended to advance the education of students and for the students, uh, was not used the way it should have been. And, uh, it's, uh, the, uh, the principal was being, you know, compensated on a larger scale than our superintendent, it appears. And, uh, and the finance officer, I believe, was also in, in that category and that there were contracts, uh, that would make it significantly even more. Now, I think Mr. Die is telling me to shut up about this. Is that right?
My, my work here is done then, Mr. Carroll.
Okay. All right.
Let, let, let me just, there are.
Well, let's say this.
There are still open investigations regarding the LMA, so it's best just to let those.
Okay, that, okay. I think that's great advice. I, I, I'm saying, this is what, uh, in essence, uh, Mr. Goss was telling me and that there need, uh, to be some legislating action to, um, you know, address this. And I think that there's legislators and I think the, um, the state administration is thinking along that line too, uh, that, you know, there, there should be some corrective legislation. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Mr., uh, is that enough said about that? That's where that.
More, more than enough.
More than enough. Okay. Uh, Board Member Hope.
So, um, along, on the, along the lines here, you, you may have recalled that last year, uh, Mr. Cologne and I worked with, uh, Representative Newton, uh, to, actually sponsored two bills. One of the bills was to put a cap on charter school principals' salary that it not exceed like the superintendent's salary. So that's a little bit higher than the fifteen percent. In addition to that, he sponsored a bill, and both these bills were filed, that would have required executives and principals of charter schools to file a, a Form Six, I think, so that there's public disclosure. And I will tell you, it got no support. I mean, I thought, and, and then we even narrowed it down to only include charter schools that only operated in one county, you know, so it's like, you know, to, to minimize the, the pushback. But, you know, if, if we look at, and I'll tell you, I mean, it got no support, not even from the teachers' unions or anything. And, and that was, you know, that was a reasonable starting point to just say, look, if you have somebody who's, who's overseeing sixty schools, why should one person who's overseeing one school with six hundred students make more than a, a, an executive that's, you know? So, I mean, I think that's probably, it may get a little bit more traction this year, but to try to put a, a percent cap on all employees, given the fact that we didn't get anybody on the other side of the aisle as much as we pushed, because you had two, you know, people in the executive level of the Republican Party, we couldn't get a Republican to sponsor it. Uh, and we thought it was very reasonable. Look, disclosure, tell the public what you're making, um, and to have a cap on, on public dollars. State university presidents are capped at two hundred thousand dollars of public dollars. Anything that they make over that has to come from private funds. And so that was a simple approach to it. And I think that would be, I think, more achievable to, to require some transparency uh, in charter schools, uh, with regards to disclosing, just like we have to disclose where our income comes from and, and how much we get. Uh, but then to have some cap at least on executive positions, uh, not necessarily the teachers, but at least, you know, administrators, um, to, to, as I say, level the playing field. I mean, I'm all for charter schools, but they should not operate with less restrictions than we have to operate on. I mean, it needs to be a level playing field, I think financially and operationally.
But, um, what, what do you think about requiring the directors of the, um, the board overseeing, uh, a charter school having to meet the same requirements that we do as far as?
That, that, I, I would be comfortable with it. I think any, any entity that's using public dollars should have to be transparent as, as, as we are.
Uh, okay, Board, you know, I, I like your ideas. I, I would support that bill if it were reintroduced personally.
Yeah, we're trying to get, we're getting to respond to it.
Okay. Uh, Board Member Golden.
Yes. What we are doing here is acquiescing, uh, to the, um, to the notion that the process that we go through to approve charter schools and that the accountability that charter schools already have is insufficient. And so what we're trying to do now is close the barn door after the horse has left the barn. Uh, and you all have been candid enough to just say that a lot of this emerges out of the abuses that take place, uh, by people who are involved in charter school education. So I, I, I beg to differ. I, I, I do not see this as a solution to anything. All it does is that it creates more opportunity to try to conceal malevolent motive. And you're not gonna stop that with any law. People who are determined to break the law are gonna break the law. What I'm concerned with is that we so seemingly arbitrarily have said, let's, let's do fifteen percent. Well, why not, why not do ten percent? Why not do twenty-two percent? Why not? Basically, the problem that you have with respect to charter school compensation is that public school compensation is a hundred dollars. Charter school compensation is a hundred dollars, but we keep five dollars of that in the public trough to make sure that you don't have to incur those expenses. So in truth, public school education is a hundred dollars, charter school education is ninety-five dollars. And now what we're saying is, and we're going to limit the compensation in charter schools, or we're gonna recommend that the limitation in charter schools be no more than fifteen percent of what the people get over in public schools. First off, I'm not interested beyond what we're doing right now for a shorter period as we do in managing or operating or determining how charter schools run in the state of Florida. I'm more interested in making sure that number one gets passed, that we get more money for public schools, you see? Because what I would like to see is a charter school principal say, you know what, I don't like this job. I think I'm gonna try to get a job with Manatee County. As opposed to us trying to, to make it feasible, possible, whatever you wanna call it, uh, in terms of, of, of charter school oversight. The, 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 the people that are gonna do wrong, gonna do wrong. We got people in public schools that do wrong. So I'm not, as, as a board member of the school board of Manatee County, I would not want to be dealing with legislation on how to, how to impact charter school management and charter school operations and charter school, uh, uh, motives operandi. I, that, that, that's, to me, that flies in the face of what I'm up here about. Cause quite honestly, I don't think that charter schools as a charter school concept is the best way to educate any child. Period. And I, I just, uh, and I, I, I certainly feel that way about private schools and the use of vouchers for private schools to, to spend money. We, we're just tilting at windmills here. The real problem is that we need to tighten up on the way we approve them. And we need to be just as firm as we were in July when they don't live up to the standards that are already in place. You're gone. You're done. And, and, and then move on from that instead of trying to, well, let's limit the compensation and all kinds of stuff. That, that, that's not what the problem is.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Board Member Golden. Board, uh, Board Vice Chair Messenger, uh, what did you think about, um, your Board Member Hope's, you know, thoughts in that, that legislation?
Well, in the interest of time, because it is five o'clock, uh, I agree more with what Dr. Hope's has said, um, about, especially the Form Six. I think that's a, a reasonable expectation. Um, we all have to do it. Everybody can see everything about any of us. And Charlie's negative, uh.
He's never negative.
My opinion, Debbie Downer.
Uh, no, I was gonna say, your, uh, your net worth or whatever it was a few years ago, but, um, but, but, um, but everybody can see that, you know? And I think that that's a reasonable expectation for anybody that's on their board or their principal or whomever else. Um, but I, I also agree with Reverend that I'm, I'm a lot less in favor of number two, uh, as I am. I'm wholeheartedly in favor of number one. Uh, and, and I think number three, if it was worded properly, I think that'd be great too. So, like I said, in the interest of time.
Okay. Um, there, I, I'd like to throw out an idea. The, uh, Rainy Harrells had an article about the, uh, review, uh, audit recently performed concerning the charter school. And it, it, it left, according to some people who talked to me about the article, the impression in some people that, man, we really, uh, the board didn't do what, everything it was supposed to do, um, which I, I don't think is correct. And, but it, it does bring up, uh, an issue in state law about, uh, or an area of law to what extent school districts, you know, can, um, you know, check on what's going on with the homeschooling. And basically, uh, it comes down to, well, we really can't touch it until after a year when they're supposed to, you know, make a report. And please correct me, those who know more about homeschooling than I do. And, um, it's, uh, if we start, you know, calling up homeschooling and say, well, we're just checking to see how you're doing and can you send us a report and it's been six weeks now, uh, we're gonna have a lawsuit for interfering. We're gonna do that. We're gonna be spending money, uh, you know, defending that and all of that. And we're not doing that. We have a sense not to do that, even though a lot of people do. I think maybe even some people on our, you know, audit committee maybe thought it would be a good idea, but we have not done that. We've done the legal responsible thing in, in dealing with it. But it does, um, and I, I think Mr. Kennedy brought this up, uh, you know, when we had that tragedy with that tra.
Couple years ago.
Yeah. Uh, you know, jeez, you know, isn't there some way we can be checking on really what's going on, you know, with the homeschooling? And, uh, I, I'm wondering how the board, you know, feels about, you know, just asking our legislators, you know, to take a look at the homeschool, you know, law, uh, in light of that, could, uh, is it, is it really that, um, anti-public interest for a school board that's perceived to have some responsibility with it, uh, to, uh, you know, ask for a report every six months, for instance, or, yes, or something, Mr. Kennedy? I'm, I'm just throwing this out.
Yeah, I, I know we gotta go and I'll be, I'll be quick. Um, the, um, homeschool parent network and the network throughout the state is very politically engaged and, and I, and after that work, that, the little bit of research that I did and the, and the, um, that kind of team I was working with back at the time, what we were looking at was extra check-ins when there has been a CPS involvement with the household or the child or family. And even that was a tough go.
Yeah.
So I'm, we're gonna get two billion dollars from the legislature, um, like next week before anything like that takes place. So I think, like, let's, let's focus on what we can get done, cause that, that's just never gonna happen.
Okay. Yeah. Any other ideas that, uh, any board member feels that we ought to, you know, ask for the legislature? Uh, if not, we'll, okay. The superintendent?
Continued funding for community partnerships.
Absolutely. Okay. Continue.
Which we received our award officially today.
Okay.
You were gonna say that.
Four comments later.
Okay.
Been continued.
Maybe you were.
Ignore that. Ignore. I didn't hear it.
There wasn't, there wasn't a logged audience.
Okay.
Continued fu- funding for community schools. And it's, this is called the, uh, Board Member Kennedy Funding Funds or something like that. Okay.
Uh, Ms. Martin, just bring up one more thing.
Yeah.
Um, what, what is our finished product gonna look like? Because we have this discussion today. We have the, the, uh, with the SBA, FSBA platform, we have the items that, uh, Mr. Chapman and our lobbying team brought to us last workshop. So do we wanna kind of turn these three things into one document?
Okay. I, I'll, can I work with staff and come up with something and, and throw it around? You can throw darts at it or, uh, whatever. Is that all right?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. The, yes, sir, Board.
I just had one other question. Uh, is there an appetite or was there an appetite made, uh, demonstrated for expanding the public school from K through twelve to pre-K through twelve?
We need that. We need that.
I, I still.
I know we do, but.
I think that was something that was talked about when, maybe when they all put that together, maybe those three documents congeal into one.
Right.
So is there, is that something? I, I can tell you, at the, at the coalition, there was no discussion about that. Okay, that, that's. I, I support that idea myself. Um, do we want to ask them to look at, you know, considering pre-K through twelve?
I just.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, wait, expand. Pre-K through twelve. Okay. Anything else?
Also along those lines is that, I'm not so sure I'm saying this right, but there are, um, categories of employees that now exist, uh, in a, um, you know, as a whole, but within that, in those categories, there are special, uh, specialists that do different things, but they don't get paid differently. And I, I guess I'm asking for a, 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 a changing, okay, let me stop being obtuse. Uh, right now, paraprofessionals, when they're lost or when their spot is lost in a, in a, in a school, they ta, they take it from the last hired is the first fired or the first to be moved. But all of the people in that school are not just general paraprofessionals. Some of them are highly specialized and highly needed in particular situations, ESE situations, uh, where you need one-on-one with the student. So, but that category is not delineated as such in the law. It's just a, a general category. And I'm not explaining it very well.
Well, I, I think that.
You, you are. It's a bargaining issue. So you can have varied classifications. That would be something that we, when we get into bargaining, that we can look at changing that out a little bit more.
Okay. So there's nothing.
If you want for compensation and so forth, because I think that's been discussed before. If you're ESOL, paraprofessional or ESE, that you had specialized training, that has been discussed before.
All right. Okay. Thank you. I, did I take care of anything else? Then we'll adjourn the workshop and be back here at five forty-five. But?
We have two more items.
Oh, jeez, I haven't got any in front of me.
Well, I think we have just one, right?
No, there's two more, but there's.
Where are?
It's five.
I was gonna go walk the dog. Okay.
I think, can we just move on to the next workshop?
Okay.
We'll move them to the next one.
New facility.
You don't imagine either one of them would be very lengthy, but you never know with us. You're full of politicians together. You never know what's gonna happen.
Okay. Is there a, is there consensus? We have this on the next workshop. Okay. All right. Thank you. It was a great workshop. It was a journey. Be back at five forty-five and I'll go walk the dog here. Be back at five forty-five and I'll go walk the dog here.